Next up, we have a couple of information items, starting with the superintendent update. Dr. Swift?
Thank you. Thank you, President Johnson and trustees. We're going to share several pieces in our update this evening, but we'd like to start with something that connects to what we just did was, is to begin with just a shout out and a celebration of Arab American Month. And forgive me, I, like trustee Gaynor, I have too many tabs. And so I've now found it. So we're delighted to have heard from Ms. Jarjura this evening. I have to share with you, the presence of our parent support groups was one of the things that nine years ago really attracted me about the Ann Arbor Public Schools. I was very struck that we had a variety of student, parent, staff, support groups. And thankfully, it was wonderful. The Arab American group was among the first that I got to meet with. So I've great, great experiences there. April is National Arab American Heritage Month. It's a time to celebrate rich history, heritage, culture of Arab Americans, as well as to honor the many valued contributions that they make to our society. Americans of Arab heritage are very much a part of the fabric of our Ann Arbor community and of this country. And Arab Americans have contributed in every field and profession. I want to share warm gratitude to our Ann Arbor Public Schools Arab American Advisory Group and give a shout out to Randa Adjoluni, Hadil Gonin, Glenn Nelson, Wasal Samaha, Kelly Stappel, Reema Jarjura, Tahani Othman, and Yasmin Maul, among others. But those folks have been faithful for many years. They have been strong partners with us and have enriched our work together in service to students in the Ann Arbor Public Schools. And deeply, we're deeply indebted for their contribution. The support they provided, as Reema shared, has been around enriching our curricula, the arts, diverse hiring, and in so many other areas that have made us a richer and stronger district and a better community. We celebrate the accomplishments of educators, writers, poets, and musicians who promote the Arab American heritage and culture, a testament to the contributions of Arab Americans to America's rich diversity. Also, I will add to Ms. Jarjura's wishes that we want to wish all who observe Ramadan, Ramadan Mubarak, a blessed and generous month to you. Happy Ramadan. So with that, we'll switch gears just a little bit. Superintendent's update this evening really is going to cover a lot of the ground that we've tread over the time since we last met last month on March 24. Let's start with this, just a reminder of where we are in the process. We last met on March 24, the evening before we welcomed our very first groups of students and our families to hybrid in-school learning. As you remember, trustees, we welcomed our students in self-contained classrooms, preschool through 12th, our preschool students, our young five students, our kindergarten students, and some small groups of students. Also, we've welcomed our first and second. In just this week, we are welcoming our third grade students. As several of our speakers referenced, fourth and fifth grade students, as well as secondary students, are next on this progression of reopening. We'll cover over the span of this superintendent's update a little bit about our current COVID reality, about the progress that we've made so far. Ms. Bacalaur will join us for a health update and a little bit about the contact tracing efforts that are underway in the district and the cases that we've experienced in the district so far. And then we'll come back, it's kind of three parts, trustees. We'll come back at the end with a recommendation and look forward to hearing your discussion. Certainly, January, February, we were delighted with the news of the vaccine, the arrival of the vaccines for COVID. As we think back to a year ago, when we were just beginning this COVID journey, it really is remarkable that, that we have had vaccines arrive. Despite that positive news, trustees, in the time since we last met, case numbers in Washtenaw County, in Ann Arbor, in Washtenaw County, and across the state have approximately tripled in the, in the short time. Actually, since you voted on February 24 to support the reopening, the cases have dramatically increased. They are now at the highest level of any time during this year-plus COVID pandemic. And it is clear to health and medical experts that we are in the midst of a surge. To add to that, the presence of the COVID variants, much more contagious COVID variants, are an added cause of concern for all of us. As you've seen in the headlines this week, K-12 schools continue to lead in the number of reported outbreaks in the state. And pediatricians across Michigan this week sounded alarm about increasing hospitalizations among COVID-infected children. I will just, they say a picture's worth a thousand words. And I just want to point out, trustees, on this slide that you're very familiar with, that low point was, the low point just a few weeks ago, was the week of February 27. That is the week that you voted for the reopening plan and support of the reopening plan. And I understand that students and families and parents and community members fall along a very wide spectrum of needs and preferences and strong opinions about opening or not opening our schools during COVID. And yet, regardless of where we fall on that spectrum of our personal risk analysis or family risk analysis, there's no denying the arc of that graph, which is a precipitous rise in the number of cases. We've dropped in a few of the headlines that I know you're all familiar with is Michigan now leads the country in COVID infection numbers. This is a different, during this surge, this is a different kind of infection rate in that it is infecting younger individuals. And we're seeing an uptick in data in Washtenaw County among 10 to 17-year-olds. We have seen over recent days that our healthcare hospitals in our area and across the state are growing concerned about capacity. That is a very grim reality. There's just no denying it. Those are our facts. I also want to share a few other facts that we have now that we didn't have last April. And here they are. Our AAPS team members have had the opportunity to receive vaccination. I'm very grateful to state leaders from many sectors who supported. And I'm grateful for the trustees on this board who advocated at the highest levels so that we could have vaccinations for our staff. We understand a whole lot more about COVID today than we did a year ago. We understand the critical importance of the fundamentals, wearing our mask, keeping the distance when outside the home, and when needing to interact with folks from outside the home family unit in a social situation or other situation, understanding the importance of trying to do that outdoors so that we don't have exposures. We have tools in school to support in-school learning that we did not have available to us a year ago. Trustees, I remember last August, in September, bringing you reports that said, if only we had testing, we could move ourselves to a more confident in-school learning situation. And thankfully, we've come now, over previous weeks, under this new administration, to a point where we do have readily available testing. Vaccines are becoming more available now for ages 16 and up. An important component, and I want to give a shout out to all of our teachers, to our Teaching and Learning Council, and all of our leaders who worked to make it happen. But another strong asset that we have now is a fully developed system that allows our students and parents to choose, to choose a fully virtual environment or to choose that hybrid environment as we're able to open the levels. That reimagined design allows parents and families to choose, that can literally choose on a week-by-week basis, whether they feel most comfortable coming to in-school hybrid learning or whether the situation is such that they need to choose fully virtual learning. So as a summary, the COVID risk continues. And in fact, in some ways, as one of our public commenters spoke, in some ways, it's worse than it's ever been. And yet, we have the advantage of greater understanding, more tools to address the situation, and continued flexibility for our students and families. I do hear trustees, and I want to acknowledge that we hear from staff who remind us that they don't have the same choices that students and families have. I acknowledge that reality absolutely and understand that. We have a number of actions that we've taken to prepare our school buildings. And here's a checklist that we've used over many weeks just to remind folks that in COVID, in-school learning, we can't just show up to learn. We've got to do many, many extraordinary and extra steps to make sure that that in-school learning is as safe and healthy as it can possibly be. There are some responsibilities that I just, I won't read the slides, trustees. You're familiar with them. But I'll just point out how much we appreciate the families who are taking care of their responsibilities. That family responsibility slide just reminds everyone that we should move through the screening tool on a daily basis. Our staff does that when they're reporting to school, to a school building, all of our staff. And we ask that our parents do that on behalf of each student. Secondly, to be sure that we're keeping students home whenever they have any symptoms whatsoever. You may feel like, well, it's probably just allergies. But in COVID times, that those little symptoms are signals that a student or staff member really should remain home for the day. And with our staff members, we can often, in certain positions, continue to do our work and yet not take the risk of exposing others. We won't go through all of those, but just important to remember our family responsibilities, our student responsibilities of wearing a mask at all times, following the safety protocols. I'm so proud of our self-contained and our preschool through third grade. And trustees, as you all have noted, and some have written me emails, it's not always perfect. There are times when perhaps students or staff are close, and there are times when that has to happen in order to, to serve a student in a situation. And yet, we are mindful of watching the distance and following the safety protocols. So trustees, to summarize, here's what we've accomplished since we had our last board meeting together. Students whose family have chosen, students whose families have chosen, have returned for in-school learning at self-contained classrooms, preschool, Wi-Fi, Kinder, first, second, and third. And they are participating in in-school hybrid learning. The remainder of our students continue to join each day. Our attendance levels remain quite high. And our students are joining approximately 20, 25% each day. And the remainder are joining virtually. We have heard from a number of parents saying, we thought we were going to come back with our group, but we think we'll wait another week or two or three. And we absolutely support our families. They should do the absolute best with their own decision-making for which they choose. The second piece of progress we've made is we've realized, and we knew this all along, that COVID school is a challenge. Several of our speakers spoke to some of those challenges this evening. We speak with team members, teachers, and support staff and leaders every day. And we know there are lots of challenges in hybrid school and in school in COVID times. So I don't want to gloss that over, trustees. I think you're aware of it. And yet, our, our team has done admirably. Our students have done a beautiful job. They're wearing their masks. They're keeping their distance. And I want you to know, when I've been in the schools, there is joy and happiness in the return of students to in-school hybrid learning. Thirdly, we are learning and we are working our rhythm. I'm extremely proud of Ms. Bacalaur, of our nursing team, Ms. Keely, who is our head COVID-dedicated nurse, of our health support team. Trustees, I think you're aware, I'm not sure everyone in the community knows, this team received the full Johns Hopkins training last summer. They are all fully trained as contact tracers. And they have been refining their protocols and working in consultation with the Washtenaw County Health Department. Trustees, we are responsible, as you are aware, for the contact tracing process that is on the district. Washtenaw County Health Department is needing to dedicate their efforts for children aged zero to five. They are doing those cases. And also for other age groups, as well as the vaccination effort. So we are responsible for the contact tracing of all of the cases in our district. And our team has refined that process. We are also standing up, for several weeks now, a full testing effort. And we're testing approximately 1,500 individuals a week. This is the S.A. rapid antigen test. Ms. Bacalaur will share more about that. Trustees, as you know, we have used athletics as one way to learn about this testing program. And that is required by the state, by the way. We do that testing every week. Trustees, we finished that testing for this week, just a few minutes before this meeting began. Our numbers this week are very, very far under that 1% figure. Really, I believe the positives are fewer, three or fewer among several hundred who received that test this week. That was not the case a few weeks ago, which is why we did pause athletics. We paused our own spring athletics program before the governor asked for that pause. And thankfully, we have seen those case numbers decline to very, very small numbers. We look forward to using that program to support, as trustee Gaynor mentioned, a number of other kinds of activities as we move into May and June. We have organizations and activities. Our students have been waiting to be able to participate outdoors. And we will be using a similar kind of approach to do other activities as we move forward. Here are a few pictures, trustees, of sites in the schools. Over recent days, Ms. Osinski will flip through those. And I know Ms. Bacalaur is here with us to give us the status of the COVID update. And then I'll be back for a brief wrap-up, which will include a recommendation. Ms. Bacalaur?
Good evening, trustees and Dr. Swift. I'm really happy to be with you tonight. I will start the COVID status update, and we can go to the next slide. I always want to ground us in our new, our new way of tracking things and our new way of looking at our, our data and school operations, which is the CDC indicators and thresholds for community transmission. These came out in mid-February and were updated toward the ends of March. So we look at our total new cases per 100,000, and we look at positivity rate. So each week, we are updating this information on our metrics dashboard. We have two different dashboards, the metrics dashboard and the case dashboard. And unfortunately, as Dr. Swift mentioned, we have seen a huge increase in the county. And that little green line in the top bar, top graph, has been going straight up. We actually had been up in percent positivity and came back down and are now a little bit up again as well. So let's look at what's happening actually in our schools. So I took the case reports, starting on Monday, April 5, through today. So this is everything officially reported through today for that time period. I do want to point out that the official case report is only cases that we know for sure the student or staff person or contractor was on campus during their infectious period. So we have done all of the investigation work, and, and these are the cases that we know were on campus during the time when they were contagious to others. So you can see that we've had some students, elementary students, high school student athletes. Again, I just want to echo what Dr. Swift said. We have had very few cases, at least this week, in our high school student athletes. And last week as well, but I'll talk about that in a minute. And we have, we are seeing some cases in staff and contractors as well. And we separate staff and contractors because AAPS staff are in our school buildings every day, working with, working with students, working in offices, et cetera. And our contractors tend to be not in contact with students directly. They may be a plumber. They may be a food service worker who is really in the cafeteria for the entire time. The one exception to that is our contractors, who are Durham bus drivers and bus monitors. They are the ones who have a little bit more, the potential for a little bit more contact with students. As you know, our whole goal from the very beginning was we don't want to drive spread by having schools open. One thing I want to, oh, actually, why don't we go to the next slide first, and then I'll make that comment. So in the interest of full transparency, I want to talk about the cases that don't require the official report. So since April 5, last Monday, we have heard of many other cases in our students, our staff, our contractors, and they were not on campus during their infectious period. So they're not included on our dashboard, but they are a useful yardstick for us, to use a kind of old-fashioned term, for how community spread. This big surge is impacting our AAPS families and staff. So for example, right after spring break, when we did that testing, we had nine high school student athlete cases. They didn't get reported because it was spring break. They weren't on campus during their infectious period. We have learned since last Monday of several other elementary student cases where the, the student's contagious period happened. Maybe they're in the Monday, Tuesday cohort, and their contagious period started on a day that didn't impact, that didn't mean that they were contagious when they were in school. That has happened a few times. We also had four contractors who tested positive immediately after spring break since they hadn't been on campus. We didn't have to report them. We also know that there are calls coming in at the building level, reporting, oh, we have it at home, et cetera. And we're trying to just quickly log those at the building level. We know the system isn't perfect, but we're trying to understand how our students and families are being impacted by the surge as best we can. I do want to say that it, it seems different right now with, with families who are more quickly impacted by the virus than, than happened in the fall and winter. So there might be one case, and then the rest of the family, whoever is not vaccinated, will quickly get COVID-19. So I've just noticed that it's kind of a qualitative difference at this point that I have picked up on. So Dr. Swift mentioned, we have a COVID-19 response team. And I would love to give every member of this team a solid gold medal tonight, but especially Keely Hoffman, who is the lead full-time nurse on COVID-19. So our response team consists of that school nurse team and six RECON Ed staff, yay, RECON Ed, who've been retrained and redeployed. And they are non-clinical, but they do a lot of the administrative work. And I'll explain more in a second. So the purpose of this team is we are trying to prevent the spread of COVID-19 in AAPS buildings. So this is really a dedicated effort. And we're doing that by implementing the public health protocols that are part of the Super Six, but need dedicated attention in, across our school district system. We're also implementing educational and testing programs. So the team has been trained through Johns Hopkins and other sources. We have, all year long, we've been meeting weekly and learning more, studying more, becoming more prepared, and also constantly refining our systems to make them more efficient and effective. And we've served as in-house experts and consultants to principals and teachers and other staff. So what are we actually doing? One of the primary things that we do is the case investigation and contact tracing protocol in the schools. And what, it's a nice pairing of staff because nurses, and it's often been Keely Hoffman, conduct the case investigation, and the health specialists complete the administrative or reporting tasks that happen, that are part of it. It's a, it's a complex process involving both those clinical skills from the nurse and the reporting and and the reporting and sort of administrative work that is required and, you know, must happen as well. We also have been providing some of the weekly rapid antigen testing and here's a couple of pictures. That top picture was from Pioneer Today. The nurse is in the face shield and the health specialist is sitting there, ready to do the timing on the test. So that, it's another great pairing of someone who's doing a more clinical task and someone who's doing a reporting task. The nurses are also assisting at the building level, helping with health support rooms, helping with individual students, doing a lot of counseling of staff and families about isolation and quarantine. And our health specialists are operating a five-day-a-week internal staff COVID questions email address. We've answered hundreds of questions thus far. They're also compiling and tracking different types of data around COVID-19. I'd like to talk a little bit more about the case investigation and contact tracing protocol. As Dr. Swift mentioned, we are, we take this very seriously and basically have a whole process where it's, anytime we get a case, it's kind of a 911 and we immediately start the system. The, the, this is a flow chart that may or may not be super easy to read, but it goes through, really from the principal side of things, all the different steps. And you can see there are many, many steps involved in doing that case investigation, which is primarily trying to figure out, when was that student contagious? When was that staff person contagious and did that overlap with their time at school? If it did overlap with their time of school, at school, did they have any close contacts during that time that we need to put in quarantine? We're trying to answer those critical questions within hours if we can, so that we can quickly alert people about their status and what risk they've been in and they could take action from there. And the, you know, other parts of the process include communication and we've, we've really built that system of communication as well. This process will only work if parents and staff answer our call right away and provide complete information to us to be able to do that. The last thing I'd like to talk about is our, our big effort we're undergoing now in coordination with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services and in consultation with Dr. Natasha Bagdassarian at MDHHS to offer a lot more testing to our district families and staff. We, we know that testing is a way that we can have early case detection across our system. So on Sunday, we're offering a large testing event that is free drive-through testing. It's painless. This is actually, they're actually using the same tests that we do for our high school athletes. This is open to anyone in the community from 12 to 6. We're sending out a lot more information after tonight about this. But we're also looking at additional rapid testing being available on more of a weekly cadence to our students and families. And the, the population I really want to appeal to tonight is our elementary families, especially if you are sending your kids to school next week. We would really like you to get tested in the interest of the school, the health of the school community, so that we can really keep everyone as safe as possible. So please, you can pre-register, it is a drive-through, it does not take long at all, and you get your results very quickly via email or text, whichever way you want to do. If there are student athletes who want to take advantage of this for tomorrow, they need to make sure that their parent signs them up because there's a, there's a part that's parental consent if you're a minor. So that wraps up my part of the presentation. Thank you so much.
So our next steps. Trustees, we really want to strongly urge, and I'll put out a message tomorrow, students and families, and most especially those who are planning to choose for hybrid in-school learning, we will ask that everyone who possibly can submit and either attend one of the events that we're hosting or any of the events in the community to get a COVID test. The thing we know about children and young people and really everyone is that COVID can be there, undiagnosed, asymptomatic. And if we are going to get control of this pandemic in our Ann Arbor community, one of the necessary steps is to submit for the testing. Secondly, for all who've not yet been vaccinated, who are qualified for vaccination, and I want to give a shout out to maybe staff members who perhaps let the opportunity pass for, you know, understandable hesitancy. We just want to raise the flag tonight that we'd like everyone in the community to, to get the vaccine, if they possibly can, at their earliest opportunity. I heard it said the other day that by each of us getting the vaccine when it's our turn, it helps to protect our children and our students because we know most of them will not be able to be vaccinated for some time yet. So if we're going to get the cases down, let's all consider vaccination, encourage and support others with vaccination. Thirdly, I want to reiterate that any students or families who have concerns, we built our COVID year reimagined learning where families can turn the dial and it will be so important to choose virtual if a family has concerns, that pause them, pause on the return to in-school hybrid. We're asking that folks limit their social engagement outside their home family unit prior to a return to school. And we know that we have parents who are essential workers and those are required to be out for their jobs. We're not referencing that. We understand the realities of day-to-day life. But we do hear our teachers report that some children are going to large events and talking about it in class. We do think that the numbers in Ann Arbor now should cause all of us to focus on those fundamentals of not engaging outside our home family unit unless we do that in an outdoor environment or some way that those social gatherings. I will share with you, trustees, that several of our contact tracing efforts understandably have led us to understand that social engagements are one of the central drivers of some of this escalation in cases. Certainly, we have the variant and we have realities, but there is a concern there around social engagement. Finally, to protect our opportunity for a strong finish to the school year, we are going to recommend a modification or a pause in our return to the hybrid learning schedule. Trustees, before spring break, we had a series of COVID cases come up among our high school students. We implemented a 10-day pause. It was very painful for folks and we heard, trustees, I believe we received in the neighborhood of 80-some emails about it, folks were in extreme distress about it. And yet, at the end of that 10-day timeframe, we implemented testing again and that spike had resolved. So we are going to bring the recommendation and trustees will look forward to your discussion. I serve at the pleasure of the board. We are bringing the best recommendation we know to bring and yet, at the end of the day, trustees, we stand with you and we will implement as, as we agree this evening. But I want to recommend that we stay with our preschool through third grade students, that we continue with our students in self-contained classrooms, preschool through 12th grade, and that we ask our students in grades four and five and group, students in grade six through 12, to please get to one of the upcoming testing events so that we can bring the cases back down. And by the way, students in preschool through third grade and also self-contained, all of our students are welcome. It's important that we get a baseline of testing. We'd like to look at beginning those hybrid in-school learning opportunities on May 3rd and look at a strong finish to the school year. I do appreciate all of the public commentary this evening, appreciate the very thoughtful approach. Trustees, these are very difficult situations and they have not become easier through this COVID year. So we are here to support the decision. I do want to point out, it's my job to speak the truth and the reality. On the next slide is just a reminder that CDC, go ahead one more, the CDC guidance. And please note the direct quotes on the right-hand side of that updated CDC guidance is that we are, as school leaders, as levels of community transmission increase, we must increase and strengthen our prevention strategies. So that is why you've heard from us this evening, increasing testing, increasing vaccinations. We do have limitations on that. I received a parent email the other day that said, couldn't we just test every day of school? We're, we're not able to do that, but we are able to coordinate testing events and to have those on a weekly basis, bi-weekly basis, so that we can, alongside our parents, partner in ensuring that as much as is possible, we're not bringing COVID into the hybrid in-school learning environment. Second direct quote there from the CDC guidance is that despite all the careful planning and consistent implementation of strategies, prevention strategies, some situations may make it so that we would need to temporarily close schools or parts of a school to in-person instruction. So it is my job as superintendent to give that message to our community. I know it's not what folks want to hear, but as the case levels continue to increase, it is possible that we could have outbreaks, we could have a situation where a classroom, a grade level, a school or the school district would need to temporarily close. In communities, and this is the definition, that have rapid or persistent rises in COVID-19 incidence or healthcare capacity burden, school leaders may decide to temporarily close schools to in-person instruction until levels of community transmission stabilize. So trustees, I'm making the recommendation of a pause for grades four and five because there is currently rapid and persistent rise in cases. Our hope is that through getting our students and families tested, rolling back on, in, on those social engagements, for those who've been doing them, I know a large number of our families have not been doing that because they've been very cautious in wanting to prioritize school and we appreciate that. But it is possible, another example would be if we're no longer able to keep up with the consistent and timely contact tracing effort. I spoke to the executive director of Washtenaw County Health Department directly today about this, is that this would be another scenario that would cause the health department and/or the school district team to need to be able to temporarily close. So trustees, it is a time of stark reality in COVID cases in our community and in our state. We had all hoped in January and February and the beginning of March, that we would be beyond this point now. And yet, today, we find ourselves at the highest level of COVID transmission as at any time during this pandemic. And yet, on the other hand, we do have tools and preparation and layers of protection that we have not had prior to this time in this COVID pandemic. All of that being said, we know that the needs and preferences and the risk analysis fall along a wide continuum. And trustees, the one solid rock that we've stood on from day one till now is prioritizing the health and safety of our students, our staff, our families and our community. We've always been clear about that priority, even though determining what that priority means in a set of details, such as the ones you have in front of you this evening, that indeed is the puzzle. So with that, President Johnson and trustees, we're ready to listen closely to your discussion and to take careful notes because it will be our job to implement as, as we determine to move forward this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Swift.